All right. Good evening, good evening, good evening. Let's just go ahead and get started here. Another midnight run study session. Tomorrow, we got to get started on machine learning or continue on machine learning for real. Cause I'm falling way behind. June was a lot of slacken off. Um, let me just get this stuff up and running here. Check, check, check. All right. How do you love us look good? All right. Okay. Let's get our handy dandy notebook out. And we left off at adversarial prompting. They write a little bit of notes down. Um, let's see, create a technical copy of Sarah prompting. So we can get rid of that little extra space that was there. As always, hit that like button on your way in, please, and thank you. And don't be shy to ask questions about anything. You know, I love answering questions, helping people out. So on and so forth. Okay. So my case study and we are here with the adversary prompting for a news agency. And again, we're just, we're just copying all the notes because all of this material is just so good. I think this is the last chapter um, of like uh, concepts and frameworks. The rest of course is like developer stuff. JW, how's it going? Um, so yeah, let me go ahead and move my cell phone out the way here. So context. Um, so yeah, we have that there. Details, practical tips. All right. So again, we're going to, we are using log seek or log sec, um, which could be download, downloaded for free on the internet. All right. It's free and open source. Uh, it's a note taking application. Um, I don't know if I would call it a note taken application. It's uh, pretty much an apple. Well, you can use for note taking, but the general idea is to write your notes in outline format. So you have like a hierarchy. And what this does, um, at least uh, for me is to be able to see um, how things relate to each other hierarchical, hi, our hierarchically. However, you say that word as opposed to long form writing, which is the form that we're used to like paragraph form. Uh, multiple paragraphs where you can't really see the force from the trees, right? You just see a big fat force. Uh, which some people prefer that. And in some uh, use cases, um, that is preferred. So let's say if I was writing an essay, of course, I would never writing in outline format. But I would write, I would uh, write the plans out on how I was going to write the essay out and um, outline format. And of course, once you have things planned on outline format. Um, again, this depends on how uh, you read, how you learn, so on and so forth. Then you could easily, you know, translate that over into an essay if you know how. Okay. All right. So let's go ahead and bold this. So we're going to select it uh, the entire row, double click or is it triple click? Yeah, triple click and then type two stars. Walk sequel add automatically add two stars on the back of the text as well. And then we're going to tap this. Step one, step two. And then we're going to have this underneath there. Again, you see how like, how we have it. Um, according to the tab, you know what relates to what? As opposed to where this was in long form and it wasn't in bold. You have to kind of like uh, infer what relates to what. That's where it is essentially spelled out for you here. Okay, um. Case study continued. So so this case study is say you are tasked with creating a technical guide for adversary or prompting for a news agency. Um, as a prompter generic, your task is a design prompts that challenge the language models. At the back end of generate more nuanced and balanced uh, responses. Actually, we're actually going to do uh, because this part, I mean, we're about 60% done of the document. Um, and again, if this is the rest of uh, if this is the rest, the conceptual framework portion of the course, then we'll get into some synthesis as well. Uh, and we may actually, uh, I think we'll do some more courses, then we'll get us some synthesis. Um, generate more nuanced about responses in the context of journalism adversary prompting here can help journalists refine their stories by exposing LLMs to conflicting contrasting information. Okay, so this is continued. So step two, design adversarial prompts. Okay. Uh, nuance and balance. All right. So this is kind of like the overview. Yeah, this outlining the steps here and then here they're kind of like giving you the prompts. So in step one. Um, understand the story, context and goal and a step two to give the idea. And then here, here's the implementation of that idea. Okay. Uh, so they didn't give an example of step one. So step one is just uh, explaining it. Cool, cool, cool. All right. So template for the new story on the controversial political topic, journalists can use the following prompts. Okay, so. So for step two, we have our step here. Um, actually, let's create a steps. Um, yeah, definition wants definition to how it work, use base situations and then we'll create a um. Let's do this. So three hashtags for bold. I think that's H3. Yeah, yeah. How's it going? Um. So this is kind of like our outline. So actually, let's put everything here. We're going to take everything out of here in the example. And we're going to put it in our steps node. And then in our example, our scenario example, we are going to refer context, um, and then step one. We're going to refer by right clicking on a node, uh, copy block reference and then paste copies the address. So again, we don't have to duplicate this text again. We just need to refer to it. So we click on that. It refers to the text from before. We won't worry about the newer days. Well, we can segment this off. So let's say we can say like this is um, adversary or prompting, put that into a um, link that onto today's date, but I just want to keep everything in one place to avoid confusion. Minimize friction and minimize confusion. Okay, understand the goal. And here we don't have an example of step one. So we're just going to go to step two. We're going to right click on this known as step two, copy block reference, step two. Now we do have an example of step two. Now our scenario. So design adversarial prompts uh, templates and then we could do this. For example, um, let's see how they template for the new story controversial topics. Okay. We could put that there and then we can create a note here and then tap that on there. All right. So prompt one and I like to have my examples on separate lines. We will fix this. So we just need to create a node for every one of these examples or everyone needs prompt, excuse me, and then tap backwards. So we line them up correctly. All right. Prompt one, oh, tap twice. We're going to both these. A triple clicking and then hitting star twice again lock sequel automatically add the um, stars, the double stars on the backend. And again, this is markdown. Markdown is a um, kind of like a specification on um, writing text documents with like HTML formatting, but it's still text. Okay, so since this is, these are example prompt, these are going to go in code boxes. So we're going to control X, tap, tap, tab. And again, lock C creates the uh, bottom or the back three uh, uh, ticks. I guess that's the actual name for it. Don't press enter. That's how you create a code box in markdown. Create six ticks, six. Log seek and other editors, you only decrease, create three. It will automatically or lock see in obsidian, they will create automatically create the uh, back three. So okay, uh, tick, 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 and they press enter. Now you do need the six ticks of created um, create a code box. Old boxes is just kind of like, if you look in a, in a book, these are kind of like the equivalent of like um, an example. Um, context specific example. Okay. And then everything between those six ticks. So between the first three. And yeah, between uh, yeah, after the first three and then uh, before the last six. So if that's confusing, I apologize. Let me show you. So, so we have six ticks here, right? So everything, and I don't know if you can see that matter of fact, let me use this. Well, everything in between these six ticks goes in a code, on code box, everything. And that's how you have it formatted and like this solid gray box. What is the purpose of this? So when we look back in these notes um, next week, uh, a month, a year, 10 years, we know that these are actual prompts. And we don't have to do any guesswork. Now, yes, we do have these labeled as prompt one, prompt two, prompt three, but I don't have this format consistent in all my notes. Okay. Okay. So step three, organize prompts in a logical structure. Now in the explanation. Uh, they didn't explain step three, but that's okay. That's a mistake on his part and these are the developer parts. We won't worry about that. All right. Why did I press cut when I meant copy? All right. So we can roll up step two. We're done with step two. And for consistency, we're going to extract out the definition or uh, what step parts through step three is and then put that up here and then refer to it down here. Okay. Okay. And then create a note there, tab, create a note here by pressing enter, tab backwards. Uh, templates. Okay, organized prompts in a logical structure. Okay. And we're going to triple click. Stars, so we can bold it and then we're going to extract this control X. And then paste. We'll clean this up. Hey guys, you have any questions? Please do not hesitate to ask. Please, 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 please. All right. So let's refer to this node, step three, right click on the node, copy block reference. And then we're going to paste and then get again, this funky address here is referring to the node, which is up here. Why don't we just copy the text? Text doesn't weigh that much because when we uh, organize a structure, um, we create higher levels of abstraction on our notes. We can just refer to our block references instead of copying texts a bunch of times. Um, now for a few thousand or even a few hundred thousand notes, I would even say it's not a big deal. But if you have a way of generating notes automatically, let's say with chat, chat GPT. Uh, specifically with like the uh, GPT for API. Um, then your hundred thousand notes can easily turn into a hundred million. Um, and then what? Now your text is it, your text, your duplicated text is going to weigh too much and you may not even be able to open your notebook in the first place. Okay, practical tips. We're going to bolt that. Um. So practical tips. Now is that for step three? Organize the prompts and hierarchical structure or sequence that follows the logical flow of the story context, ensure that the prompts are organized, blah, blah, blah. Okay. Use a logical order that aligns. Okay. So this is practical tips for the entire thing, for the entire concept. Okay. So we'll put that here. Uh, we'll create a node at one and then tap that under. Yep. Okay. And then uh, template for this new stories, journalists can organize the prompts in a logical structure such as now organize the prompts and hierarchical structure or sequence that follows logical flow of the story. Context ensure that the prompts are organized in a coherent and meaningful way. Challenge the LLM to consider multiple perspectives and generate balanced responses. Present arguments in favor of one side of the political debate, present arguments in favor of the opposing side of debate. Highlight any potential biases or assumptions in the story and provide alternative perspectives. So step three is not really a step, it's just more like a note. Um. Actually, step three should be step one. Is that a typo? Start by understand, stand into specific content. Okay, no. Okay. So yeah, these are more like meta. How to organize your thoughts and then step two, you'll create the prompts. And then step three is to make sure when you create your prompts, then do this. Gotcha. Okay. So this is another example. This is a scenario. Um, let's put that here. Our scenario. And practical tips use clear and specific language in your prompts. I'm seeing how trying to see how I can consolidate these two incorporate constructive, dress some viewpoints, arguments, scenarios. Present uh, different options of perspective, use examples, data, so on and so forth. Okay. Contrast and viewpoints. So this is kind of like an overview. This is kind of like uh, how you should, an overview on how you should organize your prompts. Let's do this. Let's put actually. So let's call this practical tips. Um, for creating prompts. Okay. And then we'll tap that on here. We know these are examples. New story. Um. I guess it's fine to put it under the scenario. Even though it's not scenario specific, but we will look in the scenario when we want to come up with um, our meta, our meta prompts to create our prompts for an example. Okay, uh, let's slide that in here. We'll actually create a line or a um, a line break or a separator. That's the term. Okay. And we can probably move that out there. Yeah. Practical tips for creating prompts, logical order, consider the context, ensure the prompts are clear and easy to understand. It's for the new story. Okay, present arguments. All right. So let's go to organize this. Oops. Okay. All right. And then these going in code boxes. So tick, 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 enter and then paste. Control X, tick, 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 enter, control paste and one more time. Control X, tick, 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 enter, control paste. Okay, or control V, control paste. Okay. And then we'll bold. All right. I think we're done. Let's explore how to implement adversary prompting and prompted generic for journalists. All right. So let's see. Where did that text come from? Where the hell did that text come from? I think let's explore. I think that was supposed to go uh, up here. Um. Wait, where are my prompts? Oh shit. What did I do? My prompts disappeared. Oh boy. Okay, um. Uh, I'm supposed to be seeing an arrow here. Oh, I don't fuck this up. Not a big deal. Glad I caught it early. Okay, so it's supposed to have step two. Okay, I got you. I got you. I got you. Got you. Got you. Only step two had had an actual example. All right. Let me create a note for myself in the future because I'm going to be losing my shit. Like, why do I have three steps and only example for step two? Uh, note. Uh, steps and in three are only conceptual. And don't have any actual prompt example. Okay. Luckily add that to the end here. Okay, um, actually no, let me add that to the beginning. Cause I will forget. Okay. And all right. So that's done. So our scenario is done. And since now this is more on the development side, that's done. We'll come back in the future and do the development part. All right. So dynamic prompting, let's roll up everything. We only have dynamic and prompt augmentation left. And then we're out of here. Okay. Dynamic prompting. All right. So this is definition one. We already have here. So example. And we put that there. Um. Yeah, definition one. Definition two. Which is okay, this. And we'll clean this up here. Sample. Um, actually before we get to that, so we'll get to hash, 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 how does it work? Okay. And again, we're not in the synthesis part of everything. So we're not trying to understand, we're just documenting in this phase. Uh, best use for I have another term in adversarial. Best use situation. Sure. Okay, it says all of these are uh, in the same level. They all get the same heading level, which is H3. Uh, best use for don't need that. That's redundant dynamic prompting. Best use for, and again, we're not following the rule of atomicity. That will come when we're implementing meta prompts ourselves. So we can roll up these definitions, how it works, best use situation. Okay. Business guide. All right. Where we want to create a story. Um, so this is example. Let's simplify an example where, okay. Um, start with a story. All right. So again, we'll be consistent, say like prompt one here. Um, and then we'll tab. Cause I know that's what we have in our other examples um, and other architectures, but I know that there are some that don't have it. And that's okay. That is okay. We don't need our notes to be perfect. Whoops. Oh, come on. Okay. And again, since these are prompt examples. Okay. I was, I was actually, as far as like Adobe generative fill, I actually uh, managed to finally get the beta Photoshop beta installed on my main computer. Um. I had to use the cloud cleaning tool. So now we can actually use it on our main computer and work a lot more efficiently. Uh, we might have live stream on because I needed to learn how to actually use gender to fill to compose other things into the image. Uh, because that's not, it's not, it's not um, I don't want to say it's hard. It's not hard. It's just not self explanatory. Okay, that's our example. And we'll have to put this on here. Use dynamic prompting as an iterative process to refine prompts and improve the model's performance over time. This could be more like a uh, a tree of thought, I guess. All right. And that'll be a note. Okay. All right. Now we have a scenario. Scenario and this scenario is called a business guide. Okay. All right. Imagine you have a large language models, blah, blah. Okay, so let's format these. Um, where's line break? Say you are task. Okay. And um, task. All right, let's clean this up. Alright, let's clean this up. Uh, we won't put this in. I'm tempted to put this in block. Um, in a no block, but no. Alright, let's clean this up. Say you are tasked to generate news article summaries using a language model. Uh, using dynamic prompting to generate prompts based on input news article. Generate news article summaries. Okay. Generate prompts based on, and okay, here's how you, the process might look. Generating news, uh, and then we'll bolt this. Put that into a new line. Generating news article summaries. The goal is, um. Actually, let's put that there. And put that here. Okay. And. Okay. Well, this is generate summaries of news articles using a large language model. Our language model. Okay, got it. Input data. This dynamic. Okay, got you. Alright, input data. We're gonna bolt this. We create a node here. Um, title. Create a note there. So again, this is more conceptual. Discoverers. Uh huh. Content team of scientists. Alright, work at name. Alright. We could generate prompts based on the input news article. This example. The prompt could be generate a summary for the news article titled. Uh, scientists discover new species of orchid. And Amazon prompt. Okay. Alright, so. Let's do this. Put that here. Uh, the prompt can be. Line. Okay, and then we'll create a, um, note there. Make that a note. Okay, and then put this into a code box. Okay. Our scientists discover new species of orchid. Okay, content. Alright, so, alright, so we could generate prompts based on input article and examples. Prompt B. Uh huh. Um, the dynamic prompt is generated by extracting the title of the news article and using as part of the prompt. Um. I did see. Hold on, let's, let's go back up here. Imagine you have your large, a language model that is designed to generate prompt descriptions based on input data. Instead of using fixed prompts. You implement dynamic prompting by analyzing the product name, features, and other relevant. Information from the input data. You then generate features or generate prompts such as. Because they use variables here, which makes sense. Write description for a product name, blah, with the following features. Alright. This way, the prompts are generated dynamically based on the specific. Product name and features along with language model to generate more accurate and relevant. Okay, so we're gonna put this into a code box. See, in their scenario example, they didn't use variables. It's implied because they already told us. Uh, they already told us that we're going to be using variables here. Just fine. Um. You only miss it if you didn't read it, which we didn't do. Okay, so we had to rewrite this prompt. We could say generate a summary for the news article titled. Um, and then we'll extract this. Um, scientists discover. New species of orchid in the rainforest. So we would extract, uh oh. Yeah, this is the one thing I don't like about this plugin. It's a pain in the ass. Alright, let's do it here. And we'll say, um. Uh, title. Based on title and we'll capitalize that. And we're, this is our placeholder, our variable, and that'll just refer to this title right here. Okay. Um. Generated, uh. And use this part as a prompt. This way, the language model is prompted. Yeah, this is another part, has been another part. Um, sample generated summary. Oh, so the, okay, so all of this is part of the prompt. Um, it would have to be because you can't just have a title. I guess you could just have a, a, a title and then GPT four can hallucinate. Um, the rest of it. Um, maybe not. Yeah, it is hallucination because it's not based on anything factual. But the information that it gives is a fact. It just can't be sourced. I guess that's another, that's a better way of saying it. Um, well, it may, it may not be. I don't want to talk in absolutes because even GPT four, even though. Uh, it's very difficult to get it to hallucinate. It does do it if you go deep enough in a rabbit hole. Um. Alright, so input news article. Sample generated. Okay. Alright. And we'll clean this up here. Uh, the language model generates a summary based on the dynamic prompt. Uh, explore all options. How's it going? Where did you get that course? Uh, you know, I pirate everything around here. Not everything. I do support. Um. A lot of authors on, um, humble bundle, but most of the things I do, um, I pirate. I parted from. Uh, Santa dot S T. Yeah. Okay, um, the language model generates a, uh, it, and the only reason why we, yeah, we have the videos, but. We, why deal with the videos when we have the text? Okay, the language model generates a summary based on a dynamic prompt. Uh, here's a sample output summary. Uh, we'll put this into a new line. And we'll put that in a new tab. Scientists from University of XYZ have discovered new species working in rainforest named blah. This, uh, vibrant purple orchid within blah, blah, blah. Okay. Making important field of botany. I'm gonna assume, even though he doesn't say it outright, I'm gonna assume that the content portion is also part of the prompt. Um, so let's say if you was, if you using chat GPT. Let's say, and this is something that GPT three point five is very good at. Let's say, for example, if you were to do. Actually, we can test this out. I don't know why we're not testing these things out. Uh, we could do, uh, input data. We could just copy. This. And we'll. And again, you need to have, uh, shift enter. If you want to create new lines, press enter just, uh. Submits the prompt, control, enter, or excuse me, shift, enter, creates a new line. Feel like it's social media. Okay. So. You have your title, you have your content, and then in your prompt. I'm still struggling with the decision to get chat GPT plus when they have being in perplexity. Um. Perplexity is what? Five prompts a day? Being, I haven't tested that out. Bard is pretty good, but. I mean, twenty dollars a month is, it's well worth, for me, it's well worth it. Alright, and then in a prompt, we could say generate a summary. For the ti- uh, article titled. Okay, then we press enter. Yeah, scientist from university XYZ has, uh, made an exciting breakthrough in the field of botany. Announcing discovery of previously blah, blah, blah. Alright, so let's test that without the content. Create a new chat, three point five. And we're gonna delete the content portion of this. And then, let's do this. It's gonna hallucinate. Yeah. It hallucinates, but it's still pretty good. Um, being in perplexity, you can create images also. Yeah, yeah, but I got, yeah, that's true. That's true. I mean, if it works for you, it works for you. Um. So right now for my image generation, I have mid journey and, um, Adobe Firefly. The problem with that is that it's fifty dollars a month. Thirty dollars for mid journey and tw- it will be twenty dollars after next month, after this month, excuse me. Um, for Adobe Cloud. Um, there are cracked versions of Photoshop that. Um, where you can use Firefly. Um, so we'll see how that goes next month. Okay, uh, okay, so either one is fine, I think. I think I would rather use the one with content, though. You know, more information is better. Okay, the generated summary is specific to the input news article and provides a concise. Yeah, so the input news article is, the content is part of the prompt. Um. And he does use, uh, double quotations here. So, yeah, everything in black here is part of the prompt. Got you. Got you, got you, got you. Alright, so generate a summary. So we'll put that. That here. So let's go ahead and alter. Um, I guess, I guess if you have the content. Um. The content, the title and the content, you don't need to put it here because it's implied. Um, so actually, let's modify this. Let's modify this because it's gonna drive me nuts. So we're gonna put this entire thing in here. Now we cannot refer to blocks of code or blocks of text in code boxes. That would be really awesome. Um, and then we'll do this. I just know that we're gonna run into this issue if I don't put it in here now. Um, because I'm not, I don't, I'm not a fan of kind of figuring, figure things out twice when you don't have to. So this would be our entire prompt here. Okay. Uh, explore all options says, I like, uh. It'll be like you need to set aside fifty to a hundred dollars a month to have a decent combo service now unless you can catch them in app. Yeah, that's true. Um. So. Man. So this Christmas, I've already made up in my mind, explore all options. I've already made up in my mind. If Nvidia does not come out with the fifty ninety, and it, and it certainly looks like they're not going to. And if they do, it certainly won't be by Christmas because they would have announced it are, are already. Um, I'm just gonna go ahead and get a forty ninety. Install stable diffusion locally. And, um, stay, um. Uh. Who makes stable diffusion? What's the damn name of that company? Stability dot AI. Uh, they would have, they'll, they'll be releasing. SD XL one, version one, later on this month, open source. Um, so hopefully by then they'll probably be version two, maybe in version three. Um, so that'll take care. I won't need to use mid journey anymore. And then, of course, with Photoshop. Um, I mean, like I said, there'll be cracked versions. Uh. Uh, twenty dollars a month. Doesn't seem like a big deal, but you know, you start getting, these subscriptions start to add up. So if you have like Disney Plus, if you have Netflix, you have mid journey. You have chat GPT, then you have, uh, eleven laps, which is twelve bucks a month. And that's, I think that's the promo. I mean, I think after that is like twenty. Um, you know, you can easily be looking at, uh, a hundred, two hundred dollars if you don't keep a, a handle on it. So, yeah. Okay. I think that's it for dynamic prompting. Yeah, this is going over the code on the backend. Again, we'll visit that in another time. Um. Oh, they have another example. Okay. Uh, actually, no, this is their programming prompt example. So. The purpose of these prom, uh, these programming examples, if you want to automate the entire process. So for example, a matter of fact, we're gonna, we're gonna put in. We're gonna watch the video on tree of, tree of thought. T L T. Um, and then we're gonna create, you know, notes for that. And then, uh, we're gonna create a script, not tonight. Uh, to automate that because tree of thought is where you go through seven rounds of meta prompting and rating. And adding and eliminating, um, best prompts, uh, given a certain context. So, yeah, you can do that manually, but you're talking about, you know, eight, nine prompts. Um, you could just automate it. Uh, that's why I do appreciate, uh, lifetime deals. So AppSumo. Let me just take a slight detour here because I've heard of it. Round software deals for your business. Let's see. Uh, thank you for the idea. I've never, I've actually never been here before. I don't care about any other sort of image generation because it's mid journey and then. Um, there's mid journey, and then there's, um. Stable diffusion, and then there's Dolly. Everything else is not even worth mentioning at this point. Uh, actually, let's put in Adobe. Oh. Okay. Because all, all these other image generation apps, they just use GPT three. Um, they just use the GPT API on the backend anyways. Uh, so, yeah. Okay. Prompt augmentation. Last. Last one. Alright, so let's roll up dynamic prompting, prompt augmentation. So. This is. Definition one. Plot example here. Okay. And. Definition two. Um, and the definition is. Okay. Augmentation is secondly, use in natural language programming, processing. Uh, to enhance the effectiveness of prompts provided to language models by adding additional information. Or variations of the original prompts. This techniques, uh, this technique aims to improve the quality, diversity, and relevance of the generated responses. Okay. Put that here and under definition two. Have multiple definitions. That is fine. Our definitions are done. Uh, steps. Okay, so we're gonna create our steps node here. Alright. And we could just copy here. Don't need them numbered, um, but it won't hurt, I guess. Okay. Enter. Enter, enter. Alright, so we'll move these back. Alright, so we'll move these back. Want to watch Twister. It's been a minute since I've seen Twister. It's Hurricane season two. Okay. And then we'll create. Notes for the meanings of each one of these steps. Alright, and then we'll clean it up. Alright. Um, don't need these numbered. It's fine if they are, but we're not recomposing these into anything. And we don't need the numbers because we already have it in hierarchical uh, order. Alright, and we will bold by triple clicking. And add it to stars, log seek adds two stars on the backend. Alright, so those are the steps. Again, we're just writing, we're just documenting the notes. We are not. Trying to really understand. That comes in the synthesis portion. Another day. Okay, so this is. Uh, a scenario. Same scenario or the same title of scenario as before. So our scenarios goes after examples. Let's say a product team wants to generate a product. So actually. A product team wants to generate its product description. Okay. E-commerce site. Um, add variation. So this is prompt one. Now on session one. I insisted that, you know, we didn't have this, but now. It is a good idea to have these labeled as prompt one, prompt two, prompt three. Um, don't need, you don't really need, again, these are in hierarchical correct order. So you don't need to label it, um, but it's just when you start composing notes. You want to be able to differentiate if these are different versions of the same prompt or if they. All are connected together. I guess you can make the argument for the other case as well, for anything being numbered. Well, no, because that'll be under steps and we don't need to do that. Okay, maybe that'll change in the future, probably. For the sake of consistency. Alright, so if we're going to get rid of these double quotations. And get rid of and get rid of. Can't wait to get learn machine learning. Why I'm going to be a menace. Okay, so that is the end of our example. Prompt engineers can augment. So this is a note. Um, the process by adding variation modification that cover different aspects, features and language styles, learn the model to blah, blah, blah. Alright. So let's do this, put that there. It could be a note for the concept overall. Um. Not a margin, right? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. We could put, keep it under because we have a similar note out here. That's fine. Okay, so that's our example. Now our scenario. And this is business guide. Alright. Alright. So we do have some prompts here. Let's say using a language model to generate product uh, descriptions for an e-commerce website. The original prompt is, and let's delete. Alright, tab or new line, then tab. Okay. Creating meta prompt for these is going to be so fun. So fun. Did I do something wrong? Yes, I did. That there. Don't overwrite stuff. Using prompt augmentation, you could generate augmented prompts by adding variations such as. And then we will put this. Into a code box. Have to put these in different nodes as well, um, otherwise we will overwrite and we do not want to overwrite anything. Okay. So we can label this as um, write a product description for red dress, write a product description for a red gown. Alright, so we can say, we can call these variation one. And then have that bolded, then we can say uh. Uh, variation. Two. That there. Okay, variation. Three, shift tab out of there. That there. Leave the double quotes. Alright, and then we're gonna bold, triple click bold. Okay, uh, such as, and then. Wait a second, that's not right. Tab. And then. Tab, there we go. Good, good, good. Alright, these augmented prompts will provide additional variations of the original prompt, which. Can result in more diverse and blah, blah, blah. Alright, so we will create a note. Not really necessary, it's kind of a redundant notes, but. And hurt. That there. Okay, and then for variation three. Okay. Good, good, good. Um, as you can see in this example, it's easier to create. Pardon me, create prompt uh, templates using. Prompt variation. So let's see, write a product design for a red gown, compose a, yes, you can actually. So we can actually create a list now. Now, I don't know how to create a list. And actually, no, you could probably do it in, matter of fact, matter of fact. Let's, let's do, let's do a little experiment. I think I've done this once before, back on day one. Um, way back in mid November. So let's say, um. Let's. Have a, or let's. Uh, create a thousand sided. Die. Each. Side, no. Uh, every, I have to word carefully, every side will. Have or will contain a. Single. Character. A number. A lowercase letter. Or an upper. Case letter. Case letter. A symbol. Fill. The remaining. Um, sides. With a single. Characters of your choice. Roll the dice. Five times. Let's see. Recode it to format it. No, not in order. God damn it. I told, I forgot to put it like, say random. Why? I said twenty five times. Stop, 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 stop. Randomly, this is what happens when you're not, we're not explicit in what you want the computer to do. Same thing in programming, randomly roll the dice. Five times. Format. Results. Our results, if I could spell, in a table. Um, with. Roll number. In one column. And. Uh, roll result in another column. Okay. Oh, boy. Let's try it again. Oh, boy. Why? Did I overloaded? Maybe I did something I didn't like. I did say roll the dice twenty five times. But I didn't say roll it random, I don't know. Uh, randomly, I rolled the dice twenty five times or randomly roll the dice? That doesn't make any sense. Format the results. Table with roll number and one column and roll results in another column. I don't know, randomly roll the dice doesn't make any sense, but maybe it'll work. Alright. Let's get back to work. We ain't gonna get stuck on this. My OCD will have me up here for the next four hours trying to figure this out. I don't need GPT four for this. Don't make me go to GPT four, please. What? Now? Okay. Okay, there we go. Good, good, good. Alright, so we have five K percent. That's what I was looking for. Alright. Actually, well, no, I don't want it to print out all the results. Actually. Print. Some of the characters. You used. You determine or. Yeah, determined to fill. The empty. Besides with. I don't know if that even making any sense. Oh, okay, so ampersand. Now, I don't know. These are just examples. You could choose any character prefer or blah, blah, blah. I don't know if this actually includes the. Okay, so it doesn't. So explanation, I did say symbols. I did say common symbols. Okay, whatever. Alright, back to work. As you can see, it's easy to create prompt templates using prompt variations. Uh, but yeah, you can create, we can actually create um, a multiple dice. We could say like. Uh, let's create five dice, each dice with one thousand sides. And um, have each dice uh, side with. Um, you know, have it with different things or different objects and then we can randomly roll. Uh, all five dice at the same time and in each state. Um, which is each state contains uh, one role of each five dice and then we could put. That role into a record. Um. And we could say like columns could be like for uh, dice one, dice two, dice three, dice four, dice five. And then have with those uh, whatever objects that it rolled. And then create a prompt based on that information. Of course, you can have this formatted into a table too and then randomly select a row in the table. I guess that's probably, that probably would be easier instead of doing random rolls. I don't know. Um, because we can have it pretend to be Microsoft SQL Server and then create a full table. Um, yeah. Okay, as you can see in this example, it's easy to create, okay. Prompt augmentation could be powerful technique to improve the performance and versatility. So this is a note. Okay. Alright. It was pretty straightforward. Uh, technical guide. Exactly. So, yeah, they had, um. Uh, this is for development. Okay, so as a prompt engineer, you're working with the librarian to develop a, to the, to develop. Generate, generate of prompt augmentations for um. To generate prompt augmentations for data requesters. Uh, to fetch data within books, the librarian want to process, want the process to be repeated, solve the task. Fetching data within books for data requesters. What to start with a prompt template for future uses, this uh, will be, this is asked example. Fetch data from books about topic subject for data requestor using search query. Yeah, you can use these for like combinations. So let's say, um. I created um, a half assed. Mid journey prompt uh, schema, hierarchy schema. Uh, it had it to where uh, GPT four would randomly select items off that schema, but you. It's, there's better ways of doing it. Like you can use a table, you can use random dice. We don't have code interpreter, so we can't put in a document and then have it use that. That would be phenomenal. So we would have to input the data manually. Uh, in Excel. Okay, snap out of it. Uh, then you generate prompt variations, fetch information. Search query, retrieve data from books related to. Gotcha, 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 gotcha. Now for some case, for the, the same case, you want to add short commands so that librarians can use. So this is on the backend. For generating your LLM or training your LLM. Fill in a blank. Oh, yeah, I forgot about the ones that it didn't give us before. Okay. Alright, um. So the technical guide, that's that. Not many of the uh, the ones that we don't have documented yet. Technical. Okay. Alright. Your work with librarians developer uh, to generate. You're working with librarians developer uh, to generate. Prompt augmentations for data requests to fetch data within books. The librarian wants the process to be repeated. So the uh, so this is. Task fetching data within books for data requesters. Okay. You want to start with a. Okay. Um. Example. And then we can do this. Get rid of the double quotations. Okay. For data requester using search query or method. Um. Then generate prompt variations. You just plug and play variables. Into the prompt template. Wait, what? Fetch data about books about uh, research purposes using keywords. World wars. Um, I see what he is doing. I just don't think it's efficient. Um. Let's see. There's a better way of writing this out. But we'll put that in our notes. Here's a few examples. Okay. Certainly a better way of doing that. All right, uh, and then we'll say um. Variation. One. Okay. Variation two. Okay. Variation three. And last but not least. Variation four. Okay. Let's clean this up. All right, and then we're gonna put all these into code boxes. Okay. All right. All right. Oh shit, for all options, my bad. I should probably told you the name of the course. Name of the course on Senate, Jesus. Um, master prompting. Let me get the name for you if you're still watching. I apologize. Seems like I'm gatekeeping. I'm not at all. Uh. Where are you? Here? No, prompt engineering. Name of the course is. Yeah, the complete prompt engineering course. On senate dot S T. Okay. My bad. All right, and then. Tap that over. I'll put my notebook up on GitHub as well. So you all don't have to um. Screen capture and all that other stuff. Okay. Uh, using a template is librarian could just plug and play. All right, so we will rewrite this. Cause I'm I'm gonna get confused in the future if I do not simplify this for myself now. Um. For example. And we could just move these back. Actually, yeah, move that back. Okay. We don't need the right prompt prompts because these are not step by steps. Enter. Oh. Okay. All right. All right. Um. Don't really need to, for example, there. It's redundant. Okay. How do we get the GitHub on your page? I haven't set up yet. I haven't set it up yet. It will be set up though. In the near future. Especially for these machine learning notes that we're gonna get started on tomorrow. Absolutely. Because I am brand spanking new to that field. And completely lost. I'm excited because it's been a long time since I've actually been lost. Uh, in terms of anything computer science related. Uh, what are you doing? Why? Why? Actually, we can just. Just move that backwards. There we go. Oh. Oh, come on. Please. Only thing I don't like about cold blocks. Okay. All right, let's simplify this. Um. So. In our variations, we are using now again with the consistency. Now the variables are in brackets. Um, as uh, our scenario and adversarial uh, or dynamic rather, um, we were using braces. I think I'm gonna use brae- actually. Brackets are easier to type. So. Let's say. We're going to librarian to generate prompt augmentations, fetch the data from topic subject. Okay. Oh, come on. All right, so let's say if um. Then we can easily do something like topic subject equals and then data. Quester equals. And then search. Search query or method. Equals. That we can do. We're not gonna test them now because I'm just being lazy and I'm trying to get through this. Because if we haven't defined our variables, then what's the point of using them? Okay. And then then generate prompt variations. Um, fetch information about. Okay, so this follows up this example. Yeah. We can actually. We can actually put those uh, variation prompts into a list as well. And then. Wait a minute, guys. What if, what if? What if the code examples that he's giving us? Is to be put in a prompt. And not necessarily into a Python program directly. No, opening ass, no, no, this course is not that meta. No, 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 no. I don't believe it. I don't believe it. Uh, short commands. Uh, this is development stuff. We'll ignore that. But yeah. Um. Creating, yeah, you can create variations, but you need to define your variables. And then create your uh, variations. Using a template, the librarian could just plug and play variables into the prompt templates. Um. We don't need to, um, you could just redefine the prompts, uh, excuse me, redefine the variables. Um, retrieve data. So let's say. Using the keywords, uh, let's see. Searching method data request of such a method. Okay, gotcha. Um, research purposes using keywords. Um, and then here we could say. It's gonna be the ban my my existence. Uh. Say. Uh, keywords. Um. And then we could put keywords up here. Yeah, because if you're filling it out manually, then what's the point? Um. Was he trying to say that? No, because they were separate prompts. It doesn't make sense. No, we have to use variables. Okay. They're trying to figure out where he was coming from by running it that way. I don't know why he just wouldn't use variables here. Keyword project using a search query. Uh, using search query. And then search query. Equals. We don't need the quotes. For a search query and then, yeah. Okay. Um, what was that again? World wars. Yeah. Keyword, keyword world. Wars. I'm probably doing this wrong. I'll have to look deeper into what he was trying to mean because I don't think he overst- I think he just meant something else. All right, author equals. Oh, um, well, no, this will be search. Method equals. By author and then here we would say. Search. And if you want to write subsequent. Um, actually, we can test that out. We are gonna test that. Um, extract information. From books. I'm like a combinatorics, but not really. Um, I'm sure we can. Um, you uh, search for extract information from books about literature for a book club. Um, using and then we can say prompt. Equals best selling. Apples. And then we can insert our variable here. Okay, let's test this out. All right, so we're gonna, this is gonna be our initial prompt. Fill this. I think this will be perfect for three point five. Okay. Okay, I thought it was gonna give us an error about. I will just use the internet for this one. Sailor Respiration. Okay. Clicked on the link. Going back to last page. Oh, come on. Oh, boy. Oh, boy. Yeah, this would probably be just better if we used it in like bard or um, being itself. Oh, come on. What are we doing? How much you wanna bet this is using selenium on the backend? So it's getting us the books. Actually, let's test this out with bard because this is getting on my nerves. Google dot com. All right, uh. Dark mode. All right. Okay. So. Here are some books. All right, so now we just change the search query. And we'll say um. Photo synthesis. It's the process. No. Oh, actually does gives us books. Okay. Um. Search query. Um. Cars made in the thirties. Okay, and books? No. Uh, yeah, I have to revisit that because I'm not seeing. What the point in filling these out would be if you're gonna have placeholders. Generate prompt variation. I probably could just plug and play variables into the prompt templates. Okay. We'll skip it. Not gonna skip it, but well, actually let me leave a note for myself. Because I will forget. All right. Revisit this um. Architecture. In the future. For understanding. The variables. Hmm, pardon me. Okay. Um. Fill in the blank prompting. Brand new architecture. Um, so. Let's just go ahead and uh workflows. No. These are thinking frameworks. So I'm gonna select and Ctrl X. And then Ctrl V. And we can get rid of this line here. Okay. So. Fill in uh. Blank. Okay, create a new page for us. Alright, and so definition. Definition one. Okay. Alright. Dynamic prompt containing for certain parts of a prompt or left blank for users or for the model to fill in with specific information. This allows for customization and personalization of prompts based on, we just put that there actually. Or variables that can be replaced with, how is this any different than what we just got done doing? Or maybe. Maybe what we were thinking in the previous uh prompt augmentation is what this actually is. Um. What if it's the other way around, uh? Where the prompts are the variables? We'll, we'll come back to it. Uh, and then, we'll actually have an hashtag, um, we'll say revisit. Or we'll call this. Yeah. Yeah, we'll leave it at that. Okay, um. Values or data, alright. Examples, so here are the variables again. How is that relevant to prompt engineers filling a blank prompting is a versatile? Alright, this is a scenario. Generate image of a blank in a blank setting, and this prompt, the placeholder blank can be filled with the specific words or phrases such as cat or sunset respectively. Alright, so you're gonna give us an examples with everything is filled out. Original prompt, write a prompt about noun and a blank noun, this example, example filled in. Uh, and this filled in prompt, the placeholder noun is replaced with stars, so she doesn't show where like the entire prompt where, with the variable equals. Or maybe. Or maybe. That's the point, to not fill it in to see what it comes up with. Technique used in prompt template generation where placeholder variables are used to guide the model in generating desired outputs, however, simply sending a blank prompt to the model may not yield meaningful results as the model needs specific information to generate, okay? We'll provide partial information to model. Of a blank setting. So. If I was to put this in mid journey. That is interesting though, like say, create something, um, but you figure out, you figure it out. Let's see here. Let's see, um. Let's do imagine, move this one out the way, that's so annoying, alright, so imagine. So imagine Batman. Doing. Blank. And a. In a, um, did they use blank for all of them? You did. In a blank. Setting. Let's see. I never actually thought to act like, leave out stuff and uh, let's try uh, have the LLM try to figure it out. So now you're gonna get all kinds of different variations of prompts. Like Batman is gonna do all kinds of different things. So some of these generated images, he's gonna be, it's gonna be four things of him doing something different. Looks like he's writing it these, so no, once he's programming, now that he's programming, another he's writing. Oh, that's fascinating. Leave it to the prompt to figure it out. Or LLM to figure it out, let's see. Programming, oh, computer, computer. What is this? It looks like soldering an image for here? And so we, if we spin up five more of these. We're gonna get wildly different examples, well, maybe not wildly different. Oh, but that is so cool though, like. What is another good uh fill of the blank prompt? Oh, don't tell me he's gonna be doing something with his hands every single time, no. You, you do get kind of like an insight on the LLMs and how. How they think, for lack of a better word, cuz. Everything so far is him sitting out, sitting down, doing something. I like uh image four here. Oh, that's cold. That's cold. I don't even like Batman like that, and he's, that's cold. Ooh. That's cold. Batman is melting. That is cold. Matter of fact. Slight detour, guys. Let's just put this in here. That's cold. Alright, and then, uh, there's a much going on with the background, Ctrl Shift I to invert your selection and then generate. I mean, we could just use the zoom out feature with mid journey too, I keep forgetting about that. That's cold. Stop it. Oh, my goodness. That's cold. In a puddle. What, what are the results we got? Yeah, everything is him sitting down, doing something. Drinking coffee. On a computer. Yeah, this image, that's the one. Fill in a blank templates, yeah, everything's him sitting down. Alright, back to work, back to work, back to work. Cuz we'll get lost doing, going down that rabbit hole. If we zoom out, just one more thing. Let's zoom out. 1.5x. See how long this takes. That is fascinating though, like. Leave it up to the LLM to figure it out. I wonder how far we can go down this rabbit hole though. Um. Anywho. Okay, so let's see. Alright. Examples. Um, data. Alright, so are our examples? Okay. I'll need that. To my emails. Okay. Online forms. Alright. Um, content generation. And then our explanation. And then our example. Okay, let's clean this up. Yeah, this image of Batman is cold though. Oh, wow. Okay. I think, I think um, generative fill actually did better. Cuz they're showing where multiple things are melting and not just Batman. Which is what I'm not looking for, but. Whatever. Alright. Yeah, I gotta save this one. And we'll say like. Zoomed out. No, go away. One day we'll have these tools for free, and we'll be tethered to some online service. Okay. Let's close Photoshop, since I know it takes up a lot of memory. Alright, um. Uh, personalized emails, high name, we're excited to offer you a special discount on our latest product and location, don't miss out. Um, email cut uh, marketing campaign that uses fill in a blank prompts to dynamically insert each recipient name. recipient's name, location, other relevant information, and the email content, creating a personalized experience, so. Um. Yeah, you can use this with like a uh, a list. Um. That's not really special though, cuz we can use that with like automation, like with win automation, something like that, or automate, or you know, insert automation program here, where just you uh, feed it a CSV file. Uh, pointing to the right columns and just iterate over those records. Um. It's nothing. Uh, kind of groundbreaking there, web forms that utilize fill in a blank prompts to collect user information, such as name, uh, email address, phone number represented blank fields for users to input their data. Please provide your blank email address and a name, email address and phone number in the field loads, I know. It's not, it's not really prompts. Um, content generation tools that useful in the blank prompts to help users create custom content. Write a blog post about topic include number, key tips for audience and, and with a call to action. See now, I know I'm supposed to fill this out again, uh, I know what he's trying to do, like, you know, you define these variables, but that's not really, so what? Um, however, I, what I think is more interesting is just to leave a blank and have the LLM come up with. Different scenarios and different um, kind of stuff. So let's say if I wanted to do. Let's say imagine. Um, Miles Morales. I'm wondering if we can add ing. Let's, let's say action. Ing. Um. Um, at. Location. In the. Uh. Time of day. Um. While. While. Blank. Blank is blank, blanking. I don't know. Let's see. I added ing to see, you know, action, then whatever, add an ing at the end of it, I don't, I do need to go through the mid uh, mid journey courses, cuz I think. Is definitely deep. If we, like, if like blank prompts becomes a thing. We should get four different actions here. Or maybe not, looks like we have two. We could create prompts. GPT4 to. Um. Yeah, generate stuff for us. If it doesn't work directly, yeah, he's sitting in all, in all four of them, um. We could do that. Use GPT4. To generate the prompts for us and then just input those prompts into uh mid journey. So all are the same uh type of day. He's sitting. Spit up three more. Just in case. While we wait. Okay, how is it relevant to the prompt? And it is fill in a blank prompting is versatile technique. That can be applied to various contexts to create customized prompts that are tailored to. Specific users situation allows for dynamic content generation and customization. Making a powerful tool for creating personalized experience and engaging with users in a meaningful way. Okay, did you notice something full and blink prompting is technique? Okay. Uh, variables are used to guide the model and generating. Simply sending a blank prompt to the model may not yield meaningful results. That's not true. Well, it depends. As a model needs specific information. Uh, generate an image of a blank in a blank setting. So yeah, you could define it. Uh, this technique is relevant for prompted engineer strategy to allow for dynamic customization prompts. Based on user inputs. Um, write a prompt, uh, write a poem about blank in a adjective blank, uh, adjective now. Okay. Write a poem about stars in a dark sky in this field prompt. The placeholder noun. Stars twinkle in the dark sky. Uh, this is just variable replacement is not really really interesting. It looks like it. Partial information. Uh, allows the prompt engineer to provide partial information by the desired problem. While leaving certain parts blank for the model to generate. Uh, write a poem about stars in the dark sky. Uh, remember our generic content, relevant content. This way, the prompt engineer. Can guide the model to generate poetry that fits the desired context and style while allowing. For creative input from the model. Eh, and variable replacement is not interesting. We already know how to do that. All of them, so all of them is him sitting. Every single last one of them. Okay, all right. While blank is blinking. So we can do, maybe we can do. For like a meta prompt. Let's create, let's say. Let's test three point five. Fill in the blanks. And then. Generate the prompt. Maybe generate the prompt is not useful or redundant. While swinging. At location in time of day while blank is blinking. Write a thrill and see what Miles Morales swings at a bustling city intersection. And the evening while an unknown villain is wreaking havoc. So it did it right. Fill in the blanks to generate the problem. Okay. Fill. Replace the. Variable holders with. Your results. Uh, swinging at a downtown skyscraper. And the twilight while a colossal robot is demolishing buildings. Interesting. Uh, compose an exhilarating sequence. Actually, we'll try both of them. We will try both of them. And. Okay, but that's, we'll have to, you know. Clean up the actual meta prompt, but um. Yeah. I like that, though. Instead of. I mean, we can give it metadata. Like a table or a yeah, a table and then have it do fill in the blanks, or we could just have it. Fill the blanks with whatever. We can even get. How do, how would we get GPT four to generate the meta model? Meta meta modeling. Okay. Swing it from skyscraper to skyscraper. Two more. All right. Um, I think that's it for that, because this is just variable replacement. Um, I think we can redefine. Think I'll, I'll leave it there for now. Okay, um, constraint programming prompting. Constraint prompting. All right. Then. Definition one. Uh, concern prompting is a technique. Guide the models output by imposing certain constraints or rules during the generation of product process. This technique involves embedding constraints in a prompt or input to the model, which helps in shape. Shape the generator output based on specific. All right. All right, steps. Define the constraints. Yeah. Actually, if we were to do it this way. The scan method. Would we need to format it? Would we? No, we would not. Actually, yes, we would. But it's a lot easier. Who cares? Embed constraint. Embed define the constraints. Uh, embed constraints. It's in a prompt. Leverage model capabilities. Experiment and iterate. All right. Uh, let's see what it came up with. Him sending again. Pretty cool pictures. I like this one. Okay. All right. And iterate. All right, common use cases. Think it gets rid of the bullet points. It sure does. It converts them. Done with steps. Uh, what is it? Best use cases? This use. Situations. Hey. Yeah, that's much better. Include. And then all these go under here. And then new line. Language translation. Whole generation. Data generation. We're gonna need to plan on how we're gonna go about synthesizing. This stuff uh to create meta prompts for it. I don't know if I want to, I don't know if I want to come up with a unified sort of prompt. Um. I guess we could. We could somehow consolidate all of the thinking frameworks and then. Use that to generate prompts, uh, say some like, given the um, these architectures. Solve this. Uh, or create this meta prompt based off of these specifications and then just have it come up with that. But I don't know if that would fit into the context window, though. We're gonna find out. Be one. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Okay, um. All right, that's done. And now we have our scenario. Scenario. Uh, technical, um. For the sake of flexibility, let's pick an uncommon use case account. This technique accountant. As an example. Okay, I see. Business guide is general steps. Technical guide is the how to. I got you. And that is the last one. Detailed prompt constraints. I want to do the metadata, but we're not going to do that tonight, because we'll be up here for the next. Ten fifteen hours doing this. Um, business guide. Technical guide. How can constrain um technique? Uh, let's see. For example, assuring that the generated text includes accurate and financial data. Okay, so we'll call this account. Okay. Define the constraints. And also now meta prompts, I don't want it to get locked in until like one prompt. I want to be able to. In my meta prompt, I wanted, wanted to be able to mix and match or create new. Architectures as well. Maybe that's something. Maybe that's the first thing we should do if we can create or consolidate uh those architectures. And to wanting to come up with different names. Um, and then document those as well. Okay. All right, so this is because we, let's take a look at the previous example. Okay, so. Define the constraints. All right. I'm gonna leave these numbered, though. Okay. Okay. All right. So let's take a look at the example. Um, use case, how concern program could be used in real world with the complexity? Let's pick an uncommon use case for this technique account. This case, the constraints could be related um. To the format accuracy and compliance of financial statements or reports. For example, assuring that the generated text includes accurate financial data. Follows a generally accepted accounting principles and complies with the. Relevant tax laws and regulations. Okay. Gotcha. There we can make that a note. Maybe? Yeah. Um, the accountant could provide a prompt that includes specific instructions and placeholders for the required financial information. Such as generate a. A balance sheet for XYZ company as of dates and compliance with GAAP, including the following line items. The prompt can also include instructions to ensure the accuracy. Okay. And these might be, this is a prompt, so it goes in the code block. Okay. All right, uh, the language model such as chat GPT can interpret the embedded. Constraint and generate text that adheres to the provided instructions, for example. It can generate a balance sheet report with the required with the requested line items. Accurate financial data and compliance. All right, the account can experiment with different variations of prompts. And constraints to fine tune the model's output. They can adjust the constraints based on the generated reports. And feedback from users and integrate to achieve the desired level of accuracy and compliance. Gotcha. And this is, uh, this is, this would probably be a great candidate for a tree of thought. Of going through those seven rounds of rating and um. Eliminating and generating um kind of like best props. Okay. We can roll those up. All right. Let's take it, uh, take, uh, take the previous example further assume that financial LLM. You are working with can pull detailed financial items from the database. Your task to help the accountant with this process using a string prompting. All right, um, and be generated such as a balance sheet. Assets, liabilities and equity. And provide clear instructions on how to use the prompt. Uh, generate the prompt, generate the constraint prompt with placeholders with the actual values. Of assets and liability example, generate balance sheet for XYZ company as a blank. With assets of. This and liabilities of that and. This and liabilities of that and. Now, why, see again, he's changing up his variable. Layout again. It may work, but. In compliance with G double A P, provide instructions. Share the prompt. Provide instructions. Share the prompt and instructions with it. Okay. Alright, so this is gonna be. Let's say overview. And let's say scenario. Let's call this detailed. Alright. Assume, alright, so this is kind of like the overview. Or the task. Like that. Alright. Define constraints. Okay. Leave this. Alright. There. Accountant role. Oh. I see what that was for now. I got you. Okay? Okay? There. And put you there. Alright, count and roll one, two and three. Alright. Provide inputs. And he's also in this tutorial, it's kind of like giving you like. If you decide to become a prompt engineer, kind of like. This is the kind of things that you couldn't expect to do. As your role. Okay. Feedback and refinement. Collaborative iteration. Okay? Alright. Alright, um. Let's see. Design a constraint prompt that specifies. Desire financial items to be generated such as the balance sheet. For XYZ company with assets, liabilities, blah, blah, blah. Generate the constraint prompt with the placeholders for the actual values of the, of the assets and liabilities. Example. Write instructions. Alright, generate balance sheet. Uh, assets of. And so, this is. Dollar sign, undersign, underscore. In compliance with G double A P. Alright. Share the prompt and instructions with the accountant on how to input the actual values. For assets and liabilities. And. Same thing here. Put that out, paste. Assets equals liability plus equity. Assets. And liabilities. Alright. Compliance. Okay. Leave that. That either. Assets 500 and liability. Why is there so many damn double quotes? Um, oh, okay, I got you. Assets, liabilities and equity. Assets. I don't think we need, well, we don't really care because. That example is just a placeholder for us anyways. We're not actually using this example for anything. Does make more though. Well, if it does, if we need double quotes. And our prompts, you know, we don't have to escape characters or anything. Thank goodness. From the client database. Good. Yeah, we wouldn't have to worry about escape characters or anything because. GPT will just infer now. What they would do correctly now remains to be seen. I don't see why it wouldn't do it correctly though. Even for 3.5. Collaborative iteration. Okay, back to common use cases. Here's a simple technical table showing how constraint prompting works. Concept, constraint prompting. Purpose. Input. Example. Model output. Limitations. I mean, we don't need this. And I don't like it. See, he's not consistent. But it's, it's, it's light years better than what we've gotten from anyone else, so. Can't have it all. Okay. Alright, so let's roll up the task. And. Let's roll up to scenarios. Best use, alright, so we can put this in definition too. And we could just paste that as a table there. Oh my God, that is ugly. Okay. Alright, so formats. Met the following. As a. Now table. So this is concept, description. Why do you? Markdown tables. Rewrite, but. Add. Action. As the. Second column. Header. Now all these erroneous. Symbols, that's fine, we'll deal with that. Okay. And then back in a handy dandy notebook. Now we paste. Wow. Still junk. Maybe it's not. Maybe that's the way it's supposed to look and we just don't have enough space. Let me see. Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah. Yeah. Yep, 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 yep. So. How do we get rid of all the math ML symbols? Could we do? Can we do this? No, we can't. We can't just do that itself. Not that we have to, because since we have the text. We could just do this. I don't know why I keep making things hard on myself. This actually rendered as an image. Alright, let's see. Mutations. Yeah. Concept, description. Search prompting. Restrain, we just do it this way. Purpose. Purpose input. Input example. What? Typically includes. Perfect. Example. Alright. Actually. We could just, well, it's gonna have all those funky characters in there. You know, it'd be really cool if we could. And I don't think we can, but we're gonna, we're gonna try it anyways. I'm gonna take a screenshot of this table. Take a screenshot of this table. And then. We're gonna do this again. That's probably redundant, but there is. Okay. It actually did it wrong this time. Okay. Let's do this again. So lazy, I'm just trying to find ways of not having to do this again. Okay. So. Trash it. Format the following. As a. markdown outline with. Lists. And with ordered. Ordered. Unordered. List. Also. Elite. All. Math ML. F M L. Slash redundant. Characters. Oh no. No. It's not what I wanted at all. Oh, Jesus, okay. Not at all. Let's use GPT4 for this one. Alright, so formats the following. As a markdown. Outline. Okay. Alright. Good, good, good. Alright. And then we can put that. In here. Of course, we want to get rid of outline. Our prompting is redundant. Okay, a technique. Alright, so purpose. Okay. Input. Practical tips. Experiment. Application. Benefits. Okay. Benefits, limitations. Alright. Homestretch. Example. Alright. All right, and inputs. Okay, so we don't need the input. And we know that this is a prompt. All right. Okay. I think we're good. Application, blah, blah, blah. All right. Summary. Oh, this is a summary of all of them. Okay. Description, use cases, example prompt. Um. Prompt engineering technique. Uh. Yeah, let's get this too. All right, so. How do we get? Actually, let's just put it in there, see. It's pretty good. Okay. Almost home. Considering prompting the last one, it sure is to be avoided. All right. Okay. So, as far as our notes go. Uh, instructive, we can put that in here. Uh, this table. Uh, key takeaways. Yeah, we can put that in here, put that there. Okay. Delete. Multi-shine. And we're gonna have a link for all of these as well. Adversarial. Dynamic. Prompt augmentation. Okay, and constraint. All right. Use cases, description. Use cases. From, sorry. Okay. Let's give us, all right, compliance control language. All right, zip that on up. Okay. And we put that. With placeholder. Okay. Wait a second. What is your opinion on blank? Please provide your answer in the next prompt, next prompt. Input for blank space. Huh? Next prompt, input for. Input for blank space. Okay. How long we've been going at it? Uh, two and a half, all right. Uh, okay. Input for. Uh, again, I have to look back at this fill in the blank one. Because I think there's like three of them. That's kind of like, um. Kind of like very similar. Just something that's not clicking. Um, with me, next prompt. Okay. That's that one. All right. Top prompt, prompt one. Two. Three. Okay. All right. All right, and that's it for that one. All right, next one. We'll go through some mid, um, no, we'll go through some more chat GPT and then we'll start on mid journey. Okay, so we're gonna tap these on over. All right, task, generate poetry action. Um. Action plan. Modify, no. It's adversarial. Oh, this is dynamic. Uh, models output. Action plan. Dynamic prompts. I didn't know about topic one, if the output lacks emotion, try again. Focus on topic two. All right. That's it for dynamic prompting. Adversarial, all right. All right, so problem one, up two. Three. Okay. Okay. Oh, don't start this. Okay. All right, so that's adversarial. All right. Almost home. Okay. Description. Cases. Example. Ask. Teach a concept. Action. Identify key concepts, action plan. Use prompts. Detail prompt with concepts. Uh, okay. Concepts. Terms. Uh, let's see. Some terms, all right, discuss the relevance. Real world scenarios. Uh. Right. Okay. Not too much longer. Okay. That's a base prompting. Okay. Put that here. Searcher. Someone just came on in. How's it going? Almost done with our notes here for this course. Uh, plan, hierarchy. One. Uh, profile, wait, what? Two. It's on, so on and so forth. Okay. All right. And that's it for hierarchy based. Two more. Okay. All right, put this under this node. Okay. So prompt, one. Two. Oops. Three. All right. Almost done, and then we'll be going back to our other chat GPT. Courses, see what they have to offer. Okay. Uh, right. One more to go. Okay. Action. It's on. Action plan. Use prompts. On pain. Subscribe. Return prompt one. Uh, not expand on the benefits. Um. Describe the product's features. Uh. Okay. Why is this one prompt? Oh. I think it's, yeah, it's a one prompt. Okay. All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen. We're done with this course. At the, I don't know how many days. All right. Let's roll all of these up. All right, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. 14. Thinking frameworks. Uh huh. Get rid of these owners too. Get rid of these owners too. Not really necessary. Okay. Okay. All of these referring back to their respective pages. Okay. Now we can roll that on up. Go back to our journals and we are done with, we started out on twenty seventh? Okay. Now we can get to the second. Alright. Just to make sure there aren't any more hidden gems. So that was eight point one lecture ten. Wait for my floor is hard drive to spin back up. Alright, craft prompts uh for different applications. Let's see. Different applications. Wow. Wow. This guy just doesn't, he doesn't stop. That is also valuable. That's something I really need to, but we're, we're, we're gonna skip it today. I'm gonna do that offline. Crafting, product manager, customer service. Marketing, wow. This is eighty seven pages, by the way. Like this is like a one stop shop. Crafting prompts, wow. Okay. Let's go on to another, another course. Wow. That's on chapter three. Uh, building a prompt architecture. Are you serious? Okay, so this is the programming side of it. Never mind. Yeah. If you wanted to use like, that will be perfect for like say, uh, a text expander or something like that, where you could generate prompts, you can create like your schemas and your uh, your data databases. Um, and then just feed that into your text generator. Matter of fact, uh, as an example, code Smith generator eight point five came out last week. Um, actually, no, the week before last. They haven't updated that software in like five years. And they came out with an updated version two weeks ago. And I intend to do a deep dive into that. So essentially, Coltsman generator is a code generator that uses C sharp. Um, for, well, what version was four point eight? I believe it was version ten. I believe it was version ten. Um, and you can use your, the dot net framework, uh, the entire, all the features of C sharp programming language and the dot net uh framework. Um, not, not dot net core, but dot net framework, the last version, which was four point eight. Um, in your uh code generation scripts. You can have master scripts, you can have slave scripts, uh, you can use uh SQL server, server databases, you can use GUIs. All of that stuff. So this will be perfect for that. You can even, uh, I will see, well, I don't see why you can't call OpenAI from the code generator itself. Um, and then have it print your or generate your prompts. Um, while you're generating your template. So it is, this is a rabbit hole. Because we can use Coltsman generator, which again, uses C sharp and you could generate any text. Any text. So we can use um C sharp to generate Python. To run our programs. We can even, we can even have it create the batch script to even run the program and all we gotta do is use one click. That's for another day. This is insane. This is one of the most thorough in terms of like thinking frameworks. This is one of the greatest courses I've ever come across and the poor guy on Udemy has no reviews. Nobody knows about him on Udemy. Okay. Alright, so. This is master generative AI cheat sheets. Exactly not specifically chat GPT. So he will put it. Go back there. Apps, you all see how many courses I have in here, right? If I could find, if I could find five more courses as thorough as that guy's course. Man. Okay. Chat GPT and prompt engineering. Alright, so let's go back to, oh, you all won't be able to hear it. Alright, that's fine. I could tell you if it's crap or not. Alright, introduction. Blah, blah, blah. Uh, let's see. It says create a general prompt structure. Uh, not try to read not only friends and information, blah, blah, blah. Define acrophobia and give an example using a dog and this is surface level. You are act as you are French. So this is persona. Instruction, context, input, output. Act as a compare and contrast the Last Supper. Um, so we already have, we already have architectures for this. More in-depth architectures at that prompting strategies. Zero shot, one shot, few shot. Alright, so we already know about these. Chain of thoughts. Have that as well. Take the letters and the word, uh, concatenate them. Last letter, we're, uh, kind of L L N. Take the last letter, concatenate them, the last letter of L in the last letter. Okay. Okay. Don't know what that was. It's just example. Coding ethical considerations, use cases. Uh, this is surface level. It's not terrible, pretty surface level. Creating AI apps with OpenAI. That's a review summarizer translator. So this is a project space course. And we actually have quite a bit of those as well. Okay. What else we got? Become a chat GPT pro, writing better prompts. Alright. So surface level. Start broad like a funnel and then drill down. Okay, next. Okay. Uh, policy writing in seconds, career developments, ethics and limitations. Alright, surface level. Okay. Next. Is this, no, it's not a duplicate course. It's just. Yeah, surface level. Training manuals. Scripts. Okay. Next. Chat GPT prompting engine. Okay. Okay. Tone out the selection. No. Next. Uh, effective prompt engineering. Effectively. The five W's. Oh, boy. What, when, where, how? Okay. No. Nope. Nobody, nobody, no. Surface level. Alright. Next course. Master reverse prompted engineering. Alright. Let's see what this brings. It's death by PowerPoint. I like that. No face. It's good. Alright. Let's see. Reverse prompted engineering, the key to high paying AI prompted engineering jobs. Alright. Starting with the desired output and working back to create a prompt that would generate that output. It evolves analyzing the, alright. I like that. This is actually valuable. Having the answer, like having uh GPT come up with questions. It's meta prompting, but it's reverse engineering. Or just reverse prompting. Or reverse prompt engineer, I guess. Okay. Sorry that you all can't hear it. But basically, this is reverse prompted engineering where you essentially give it an answer and it comes up with questions. Or you give it an output and it attempts to come with prompts. That uh prompts that for input. To achieve the output. Now it doesn't really give us a thinking framework. He just gives us examples, which is fine. Let's see. Copy and paste an email to extract the most semantically relevant entities from this text. Put the entities into a chart numbering them from the first column. Okay, text equals what is the blue ocean? Okay. The ocean is like. Alright. This might be something. Alright, now give me a single prompt that would create a single up, a similar output to the text. The tone and writing style should be included in the prompt. Alright, should be mentioned as needing to be included in output of the prompt. To be clear, I want you to reverse prompt engineer the text I gave you, meaning I'm looking for a prompt that can write that text. Huh? Okay. Important copy and paste a prompt I just gave you. Important copy and paste of prompt I just gave you. I also included, be sure to give relevant H1s and H2s, header ones, headers tools. And I told it, I want Blue Ocean strategy to be my H1. Okay. Riddle article discussing the top 10 innovative companies of the year and their groundbreaking technologies. This article should highlight the way in which these companies have disrupted. Okay. This is fascinating. Next one, give me a single prompt that would create a similar output to the text, the tone and render style should be included in prompt. Entities, 1 through 10 should be mentioned as needing to be included. Okay. Okay. Let me go over this, the third one. Blue Ocean strategy, that's for first, right? If you're not satisfied, ask for more detailed include more entities and it will create a new prompt for you. Um. So. How would I? Let's see. Okay, type the following prompt. Enable reverse engineering by me create a prompt for a given text. Okay. Create a very technical reverse prompted engineering template for a product description. Text, smartphone developer, Apple's released. What are the technical specifications? And how do they compare its higher end counterparts? Okay, so it's a form of meta prompting. Alright, so. Okay, I won't look at that. Okay, so. Um, so was that two or is that one? Pretty sure it was one. Okay. Alright, so thinking. Thinking, think your frameworks, whoops. Reverse. Reverse prompt. Engineering. Okay. Definition. Definition one. A meta prompt. Technique. Where you supply the output. Matter of fact, meta prompting should be tagged, tagged, um, linked. Where you supply the output. And ask. The LLM, because we're not specific to chat GPT. To produce. Okay. Um. Input, so it's kind of like saying, we'll create note. Kind of like. Mid journeys. Uh, describe. Feature. Okay. Um, create a very technical. Reverse prompt engineering template for a product. I enjoyed the one he had before where he said he was a reverse GPT. Pretty simple, but that's all it takes. Reverse engineer, reverse, reverse prompt engineering for. Alright, reverse engineer the following product and embrace this capture the writing style and the length of the text and detail. Okay. Uh, wish that with standout colors and a so this is a description of the item, probably got that off a website. Uh, what is the standout feature? Features of Asus, we have a book, how did they enhance the other computing? Okay. Um. You know, we could. Know what we could do with these architectures? We could feed it. We can feed it in a GPT for an X. GPT for the reverse prompt engineer, the architecture to come up with a come up with a prompt and then, and then do tree of thought on that. Uh, yeah, let's do that. How did he read this last one? So he said. Let's see. Uh, you are reverse GPT. Um. As an expert in reverse prompting engineer and reverse prompting, he must reverse it in there. Ask the user input, uh, research paper. Could you provide me with a prompt you'd like me to generate the output for? Okay, yeah, I like that. Set up some goals. Alright. Okay. You must reverse engineer. So all this is a prompt. So. Uh, as an expert in reverse prompting, you must reverse engineer the input given by the user and generate a prompt that is closer. That is closest. Or you don't even have to do that. Um, that is close to that input. You have these goals, goal one, actually use the input. Um. Uh, let's see, reverse prompted inputs, provide the accurate and precise output prompt that will generate the input. Okay. Alright. Let's try that. Let's actually put this in a GPT for. Uh, new chat. Uh, prompt the input, provide the accurate, okay. Alright. Um, the following is in, uh, is a prompt. Engineering. Our kid texture, I can never spell this right. So Ben. Architecture for um, effectively. Creating. Proms. Actually, no, let's leave this part out. I want to see what it does on this arm. Uh. Okay. So let's say for, um. Let's say for, where's my concept one? There it is. Okay. And let's put that here. Come with concepts one. Okay. Uh, well, there are no. Alright, let me get a markdown monster. Oh, here we go with this again. It'll work though. Um. Unregistered, of course. I incorporating a specific concept and proms. I. Actually, let's just do it as is and see how. See how good it is. Alright. Alright, go ask the, uh, could you, what are the steps to be taken? How would you present it if you're asked to teach a concept? By identifying, explaining key concepts with the help of prompts, could you give an example of such prompts? As educator on the subject of matter expert, can you describe the strategy? To teach complex concepts? How would you break down these concepts and make them understand? Okay. Um. What are the steps to be taken? And how would you present it if you're asked to teach a concept by identifying? It's fine, little generic. Um, let's do it again. For. Okay. Create the correspondent prompts. Alright. Let's see, I comes up with some help now. Uh, let's do. Let's do the entire specification. Okay. Um, the following is in our picture. Or creating concept based prompts. I wonder if we could give it like nested goals. Um. Actually, we'll test that next. Okay. Please provide the definition steps involved in creating such prompts. Uh, could you please explain what concept based prompting is? Please provide definitions to steps involved in creating such prompts. And so such examples and scenarios where concept based prompting could be applied effectively. It's not bad. Create a similar um, architecture. Architecture, um. But for a different purpose. And a different name. This is reverse GPT as the context. Experience learning, experience based learning prompts. Experience learning, oh. Okay. Oh, boy. Keep going. Crisis management. You see how powerful meta prompting is? You can have it spit out entire architectures. We're gonna see if it's garbage or not. Even the steps. Alright, let me see. Hold on, wait, 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 wait. Experience based learning prompting refers to the design of prompts that prioritize learning through practical real world experiences. These prompts aim to encourage the model to generate responses that incorporate insights and wisdom gleaned from actual experiences. Uh, definition two, experience based learning prompts is a method used in prompted engineering to listen from language models, blah, blah, blah. Identify related experiences, review the objectives and determine which practical experiences are most pertinent. Project management team conflict, design realistic and actionable prompts. Develop prompts that evoke responses based on practical experiences using language and encourages application in action, consider real life scenarios. Organize prompts in a progressive structure. Arrange the prompts in a progression that mirrors the progress of experiential learning, ensuring a logical sequence of experience, reflection, conceptualization and application. Step one, the user wants to generate suggestions for uh, managing a project using experience based learning prompting. Generate a project management strategy based on experience of a seasoned project manager. Seasoned project managers. Uh, create a step by step guide for resolving team conflicts, drawing from real life, develop a self engineering development plan using agile methodologies incorporating the experience of successful. Okay, so our scenario. Uh, they even have it, they even have the markdown here, guys. Collapse equals true. Step one, identify relevant experience, review the field of crisis management. Um, crisis management training tool, okay. And identify key experiences to incorporate in the tool, example prompts. Generate scenario where a company faces a major PR crisis. Create a hypothetical situation where product recall is necessary. Oh, okay. Develop a scenario involving an unexpected leadership change in a corporation. Uh, practical tabs ensuring this selected, uh, experience align with the trending objective, design experience based prompts. Um, create prompts that invoke responses, blah. Explain how to navigate a major PR crisis. Describe the steps to take when a product recall becomes necessary. Detail how to manage a smooth transition. So. This is not a, it's a scenario in terms of like the context, but it's not actually giving us a scenario like it has a PR crisis and a recall. Um, I would love for it to just take once, one of them and then just create prompts on, on that. Detail how to manage a smooth transition during an unexpected leadership change. Use specific language, alright, organize the prompts in a progressive structure. Uh, example prompt progression, uh, PR crisis, product recall. Unexpected leadership change, maybe they are. Arrange the prompt to reflect the process of experiential learning, experience reflecting, understanding and applying, that is Bloom's taxonomy. Um. Alright, test and refine the prompts. What steps should be taken? Alright, so yeah, continue generating. How would you? How would you coordinate a large scale product recall? Incorporate into the tool. And create the prompts in the training tools, use interface, example implementation include the prompts, wow. Test and deploy the tool. Um, example testing, have a group of crisis management. Okay, it's not bad. Um. Let's see what else it can come up with. All right, so scenario based problem solving in mathematics. Okay. Linear equations, problem set. Wait till I come up with uh, prompts where to generate meta meta models. Okay. This is called scenario based problem solving. Scenario based problem solving involves creating problem sets focused on real world scenarios to better understand. And apply mathematical principles. Um, these are. All based on creating concept based prompts, um. Uh, let's see, themes of a certain outcome or domain. Okay, so yeah, these could follow both of these architectures. Um, if we want to call them that. Um, yeah, because they. They do provide like an entire framework. Um, review the core syllabus or specific topics, design realistic scenarios, organize problems according to complexity. Craft a real world problem that requires the use of percentages to solve. Create a mathematical problem involving discounts at a store where the solution requires understanding of percentages. Formulate a word problem where students need to calculate the interest on a bank loan. So yeah, this is very valuable. Um, identify the mathematical concept. Generate a real world problem that generate, uh, that involves K. Craft. Organize the problems. Example, problem chain, speed problem, break even problem. Test the problem chain with different students or refine the problems. Okay, we'll go one more. One more. Empathy based prompts useful for counseling or therapy chat, chat box. Let's call this architecture empathy based prompting. Okay? Identify the emotional context. Design empathy center prompts. I'm here to listen to you, you're not alone, it's okay to feel this way. So we can create, we, we can actually create a chat bot with these specifications. Let's keep continuing generating. Test and deploy the bots. Uh, integrate the empathy based prompts into the bots response system allowing for empathetic conversation with users. The bot uses the sequence of prompts to guide its responses during. During user interaction. Test and refine the prompts, test the prompts with different emotional contexts and refine them for effectiveness. Sounds like you're dealing with a lot. Can you tell me more? I can understand why you'd feel that way. Wow, it's not bad. How did your day at work make you feel? This sounds like it was really tough. I can imagine that must be really difficult. What are some ways you've coped with stress in the past? Therapy chatbot. All right, one more. Uh, scenario based prompting, we already did that. So again, all of these uh, thinking frameworks will fall under the concept based prompting. That's why they essentially follow the same, different domains, but essentially the same um, formula. That empathy one was, was pretty nice. Great way to encourage practical thinking, design, scenario based uh, prompting, organize the prompts sequentially. Yeah, that was pretty simplistic. Okay. Um. Did I? What was I supposed to write down? Examples. Ask the user input, reverse prompt input. Ask the user input? Uh, could you provide me X for the user input? Uh, input research paper. I don't understand why he would ask for the user input if you just put it there. Research paper on climate change and its impact on ecosystems. Uh, reverse prompt. Uh, provide accurate. Accurate and precise output prompt that would generate the input. Hmm. Okay, hold on, let me see. Oh, it hasn't been playing for a while. I need a research paper. Uh, reverse prompt, basically input. You like when you reverse engineer a prompt that is closer to your original request, here's. Output prompt, write a research paper exploring the input, the impact. Climate change on ecosystems. Uh, climate change and its impact on ecosystems. Huh? Okay. Okay, so. Okay, so you generated the output prompt, provided the accurate and precise output prompt that would generate the input. To generate your desired input, you could use the following prompt, write a comprehensive research paper on climate changes profound. Okay, I think. I think you're giving it a sample input, it generates the output, and then it reverse engineers the output. The read, uh, to generate the input. Okay, I got you. Okay. Um, do I like that? That's for the user input. Reverse prompt the out, uh, reverse prompt the input. Okay. So. You need to supply an example. I'll stop it. Input. For reverse. GPT to. Generate an output. So that it can. Reverse engineer. Reverse engineer that output. To an input. It has created. Um, hmm. I wonder. If we fed.
No.
Oh, that's confusing. Um. It has created. Need to supply an example input um, for to. To generate an output um, for example input. Uh. All one. I'll put. All two. And that would be. All three. I think this, I think it has much more potential than what his example was. Call through provide accurate, okay, write a comprehensive research paper on climate change. Provide me with the prompt you'd like me to generate the output for. I need a research paper on climate change and its impact on ecosystems. Uh, reversing, uh, reverse prompt to input, basically input, you would like me to reverse engineer a prompt. Original request, here's a worse prop I have generated. Okay. Provide the accurate, all right, to generate your, you could do the following, okay? Okay, I got you, I think. Hella confusing, but I think I got it. Um. I think I'm gonna keep. Ow. So this is more of a simple example. It's a pretty simple example as well. Actual as documents. All right, let's capture this. This one strikes four, it's straightforward. There's no guesswork about this one. All right. Here's. Well, instead of saying very, we'll say highly. Oh. For a product description about iPhone 11. Okay. And that'll go as an example. All right. All right. You need to supply, matter of fact, that goes up here. Okay. And. That's straightforward. Okay. Uh, enable reverse prompted tonight by. Prompt from, okay. Blah, blah, blah. All right. So this is actually prompt one. Okay. Okay, and then we could say. This is prompt. Two. Okay. Uh, we're unable reverse prompt engineering. Uh, we can improve this. Um. Reverse prompted engineer the following. Uh, the following text. Reversioning prompting. Let's say. I don't know, um. Text. And we could say, uh. Define as. Creating a prompt from, from a given text. Reverse engineer the following text. And then we can have this. And then we'll put this into a code box. Okay. A highly technical. Look at me. Give me text, reverse engineer the following text. Highly detailed reverse prompt. Well, this is asking for a template, not a prompt, though. Um, we'll keep it as is. Matter of fact, let's test this. Um, no. Rose. The key feature specifications, a unique selling proposition that will be including a highly technical product description of. The iPhone 11. I've probably forgot to put the damn text. Um, okay. So it actually did what it was supposed to do. Um. What are the key specifications? Hmm. An iPhone 11. Give me another one. Given the specifics of the iPhone, designed and detailed and technically uh technically focused product description. These are all good. These are good. Okay. This uh create a highly technical uh template for a product. Ah. A product description about the iPhone 11. A highly um. See, technical focus product description of on iPhone 11. Okay, that's better. Okay. I like that. Okay, so we got reverse prompting, prompt engineering from this guy, awesome. Reverse prompted engineer the following product, capture the writing style and length of the text in detail. So prompt engineer the following product. What are the standout features and how do they enhance? Okay, uh catch the writing style, style and length and the length of the text in detail. Um, it's kind of like what I did, I just consolidated it. You know, you don't need two prompts when one can do. Reverse engineer the following text. Um I could probably add, capture the writing style and length of the text in detail. Capture the writing style and capture the left. Is that, is that what that means? I think mine just works, my works as well. There's nothing special about um that prompt. Okay. What else you got? In the following text, capture the tone and writing style of the all text coming from. And how does it differ from the blue ocean? So yeah, you can use websites. A red ocean strategy and business and how can it how businesses gain a competitive advantage? Okay. So yeah, you're using um meta prompting for it to create uh prompts for you. There are of course other meta prompting uh styles, um you got the rating system. Uh thinking deeply. Um, there's some other ones too, I can't remember. Okay. I think that's it. Oh, he has one more. No, that surface level. Uh, I'm not sure. Oh, he has prompts. Let's see. Uh oh. Fifteen kilobytes? The prompt will be used by you, you're prompt engineer equals assist me crafting a perfect, okay, so these are meta prompts. Okay. Additional reverse prompts. Okay. So we'll swipe these. And we'll delete those. Alright guys, I'm gonna hang it up for the night and we will start machine learning. Um, I'm not gonna make a promise to say this evening as a Sunday evening, but I'm gonna try to, try to get there. Alright, thank you all so much and I will see you then.